I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The call will indicate that all board members are present and who are our state member. And with that, the next item is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 14th, September 14th, 2021 Board of Education agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I second.
Thank you very much. Now the approval of September 14th.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the second was from Mr. Yenblad.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is passed unanimously and approval. Okay, at this point, I want to make an announcement about the upcoming public comment. The letter we have submitted to the audience tonight is indicative of the fact that I have over thirty requests to speak. And letting you know that we do set aside thirty minutes for the purpose of having a public comment. There are forms, blue ones that are on the floor today, please get that turned in if you would. The forms are available and I do need to have those completed by the time I get to the item that is public comment. So I wouldn't want to have one a while later because then I won't be accepted to have you come forward. So do get those in if you have them already. Also, because we normally allow up to five minutes because of the number of requests to speak, we will reduce that to one minute per speaker to come forward. And with that, keep in mind as you're thinking about your remarks to tailor them, especially if you hear somebody else has something to say, perhaps you can go to another point or just emphasize the same, but just in mind, keeping in mind that we are going to be truncated over a length of time. Also, if you need any translation services or other accommodations, we will be happy to accommodate anyone with that request. The more notification we have ahead of time, preferably later to report that we're in excess, make sure that we can have someone here or they put them here. And last but not least, we want to hear all opinions. There will be diverse opinions, but please be respectful of anyone that's a Republican. We do have a stability policy. We do expect that everyone to listen with politeness and not interrupt with any comment or other activity that would be distracting. So keep that in mind as you come forward. All right. We do have a public hearing this evening and that is on the senior item. Fine, with that, I am going to declare the public hearing open. And this is in regards to, relative to certification assurance for fiscal year 2021-22 regarding the availability of student textbooks and instructional materials. It is now open for this public hearing as of seven o'clock. And with that, I would like to.
Good evening, President Freeman, members of the board, superintendent Salsa, executive cabinet, and community members. Annual board action is required in order to receive funding for the people textbook and instructional materials incentive program and the education code section six oh two five two. This action entails a public hearing to make the determination that each people of the district has available textbooks and instructional materials. The public hearing is also intended to ensure that all district textbooks adopted in each subject area are consistent with the state content standards and curriculum frameworks adopted by the state board on education. We are pleased to report that the Central Yorkland Unified School District has adopted textbooks in all subject areas that are consistent with the state contents through educational code six oh six oh five and that are established textbook adoption. Additionally, each people has the appropriate textbooks and instructional materials as required by law. We are pleased they vote for approval of the materials with the people textbook and instructional materials incentive program. The Central Yorkland is in compliance with the legal requirements for the twenty one twenty two school year. Tonight's public hearing serves to provide the public with opportunity to provide input on a study and assignment to help them fall back to use for that purpose. President Freeman.
Thank you. So at this time, is there anyone, you do not have to fill out a card for this purpose of this hearing, is there anyone coming forth who wishes to speak to this item? It is later in our agenda. I wish to approach the mic. Please go ahead and approach the mic.
Would this be critical race theory?
No.
No, this is pertaining only to what she just explained. It is item thirty-two in the.
Yeah, check that book.
Textbooks. It's about availability of textbooks and conforming with the state standards. Solely that, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, then I'm going to declare that the public hearing has concluded at seven oh nine. All right, moving ahead to minutes, we have two sets. I will take a motion for the first item.
I'll make a motion to recommend that the superintendent of schools, the board of education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Yenblad and a second by Mrs. Anderson. Are there any additions, corrections, or other things that can be made for you? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm going to abstain because I was not prepared. Okay, so the record will show that there were four ayes and one extension from Mrs. Black who is not present at that meeting. And also. All right, moving on to item two, are we taking motion please?
I'll make a motion to approve the board of education, the minutes for the special meeting on August thirtieth.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Mrs. Anderson and a second from Mrs. Black. Again, any additions, corrections, or other?
I'll need to abstain because I was not present at that meeting.
Other than that, okay, we'll take our vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then I will indicate that there were four that were given aye and then one extension from Mr. Yenblad. Thank you very much. So we're here, we're a public comment. Do I have? Do I have all forms? Okay, we have thirty-three speakers at this time. And that would conclude it again. Without me having it here right now, no other cards are going to be accepted. So I just want to be sure that that is clear so someone isn't called apart. Okay, what I'd like to do, which I've done in the past when we have new speakers, is I'm going to call three names, those are the names in which those three members will be coming forward. So just listen for the names as we hear them and be prepared to come forward to the speaker. All right. The first speaker to come forward is Ed Gunn. The second will be Sue Palace and the third will be Carmen Abbott.
Hello, good evening. Name's Ed Gunn. I've got a little note that I want to read to you guys. It's entitled "Union Poison Travels in a Circle." Children go to school where the union reigns. Those children get polluted with things like socialism, Marxism. Everything is free and there's no responsibility. Those children grow up and they hear political ads with the same lies told to them at school, paid for by the teachers' union. Those adults vote for brain-dead Marxist morons like Newsom, Biden, and Harris, who answer to the teachers' union. Those political Marxist morons then pass laws to teach our children more crap like sixteen nineteen project, CRT, ethnic studies, thirty-one genders, et cetera. You not, you do not need to wonder why America is in big, big trouble. Teachers, good. Union, bad. Teachers, I urge you, quit the union. They're destroying America.
Are you a victim? Or are you a suppressor? CRT is a woke political indoctrination that does not belong in our K-12 education because their students aren't mature enough to handle the subject. So I ask you, CRT. In CRT, you are either a victim or you are a suppressor. What does that look like, Carmen? Playground. Well, let me tell you, it's cowboys and Indians on steroids. That's what it looks like. So I always ask myself when this stuff starts happening, why? Why is this happening? Guess what I found out? Maybe our students aren't going off to college at the rate we thought they were going off to college. Take as far as high school, for instance. Approximately fifteen hundred students. The fall of twenty twenty, ninety-nine applied, ninety-four got accepted, and thirty-seven went on to a four-year CSU. Really?
You really have to hear your remarks at that point.
That's horrible. No wonder you need to.
I feel like I'm not qualified for that. So I'm just here to talk about the new, I don't even know if it's new, but the student sent in decision tree. And I know that that is something that CDHP has handed down to our district. But my son came home in tears this week. A coach pulled him aside and kind of encouraged a vaccination on him. And I know that's not okay and I can move beyond that. But this decision tree is sending everyone up for discrimination. A coach can discriminate if you are or not. You can say, well, coaches can't know that. Well, how are they not going to know when you can sit in class, school can bait your money, but then for fourteen days, they're not on the sidelines. Maybe they're on the sidelines, but they're the only one in a mask and they're perfectly healthy. Like, that is not how sports are supposed to be. That's not how dance is supposed to be or any extracurricular activities. It's coercion. There's a reward of freedom for our children after they get the vaccination? It's just not okay.
The first name was Debbie Morgan.
Hi, my name is Debbie Morgan. I'll make this quite brief. Twenty twenty-one public school rankings by State Education California with listed forty-one of fifty-one states. This is so sad with our education. How about our teachers doing a much better job teaching, reading, writing, and arithmetic? Hitting our scores higher and our kids better educated to compete in the real world. I don't want my taxpayer dollars going to ethnic studies or CRT. Massachusetts is highly rated. Don't reinvent the wheel. Look and see what other states are doing that have a much better rate of return with education than California.
Hello, my name is Carrie Mauck and I don't want to be here. I'm tired of sitting on the sidelines waiting for someone else to speak up for me, to advocate for my children. Today, we are here to talk about our children's health and the school board's recommendations and requirements to wear the masks in the classroom. And other things, but I didn't tell you all that. And we, as parents, want the option to choose what is best for our children's health. We want you, our board members, to support these decisions. And we need to consider the effect that the school board's enforcement of these mandates have on our youth's health. Last year, my daughter was threatened by her Spanish teacher to be forcibly removed from her classroom for pulling down her mask to ask her question. This action can be considered bullying for just pulling down a mask. Teachers need to show empathy instead of anger as students look up to them as role models. Also, we have seen a surge of fifty percent of suicides in adolescent girls from age twelve to seventeen during this pandemic. Our youth are suffering for the decisions forced upon them by the school board and the figures of authority.
Hi, my name is Karen Lee. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-three. My husband, myself, and all three of our adult children have gone through the Yorba Linda, Central Yorba Linda school. According to the National School Board, school, public school is to prepare students for college and the workforce. Only thirty-two percent of fourth graders are reading efficiently in California. That is well below the average and behind twenty-five other states. I would like to see us focus more on spending our money to help our children succeed. I don't know the numbers, but I think enrollment must have declined. I know so many families that have pulled their kids out of the system this year and are doing homeschool or private school. My own grandchildren were supposed to go to Linda Vista and they're not now because of the CRT, the mask mandate, and the radical sex act. Parents should be permitted to teach their children those things, those areas, there's sensitive issues. And parents have been entrusted with these children. And we've all heard the science and I really just think we need to get back to basics.
Okay, the next three speakers. Sarah Phillips, followed by Dawn Brown, followed by Tina Backer.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Phillips. I'm the teacher librarian at Yorba Linda High School. Tomorrow starts Hispanic heritage month. It's a national monthly recognition. Truski Buck came to my library today and she saw the display that I have out there. There's also a virtual component on the library's website. You can just go to wileychess.org to check that out. And you can see other previous virtual displays that I've created for like Black History Month, Women's History Month, and so on. I believe it's important to spotlight different voices in our community so that everybody's stories can be told. I'd like to talk about our high school libraries. We do a great deal to support our students from managing Chromebooks and textbooks to building a collection the students enjoy and that also support the curriculum, providing an inviting multi-use space for our students and all sorts of other things we do to support our administration staff, students, and parents. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dawn Brown. I'm going to try to cut this short on two different topics. One is the mask mandates and real quickly, just use the science. I mean, right now, we know that there's about point two percent of the deaths are due to COVID, point three or four. So what does that tell us? It tells us that the sciences are being used, teachers' unions are being used, and that's wrong. Second one is associated with what we're doing on the CRT. My daughter just went through the CRT, like went through the universities and through California and came home indoctrinated. She calls me a white racist. She calls me a white privileged guy. I am not. And I, and I, you know, they got the thing where you get caught in the whole thing that you can't get out of there. But I'm not and it's very frustrating to get involved in that. I just want to make sure that everybody asks the question, why CRT? Why do we really need to do that? There's, aren't we learning history right now? Isn't history important for us to learn and learn it in the right way? I mean, I asked, I asked just a couple of questions for you. And that is, kids love kids no matter what the colors are until they get to school. Why do you desire to ruin it for their kids? And why not just do history and not ideology?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Tina Backer. And as I sat down to write, I'm going to read this because I got to go faster than under this constraint. But as I sat down to write what I was going to say tonight in about a minute or less, I realized the absolute insanity of this exercise. Our kids, grandkids, future generations will be impacted by these unconstitutional self-suffocation devices which prevent not only social healing for our kids, but increase airway resistance during exhalation and ultimately lead to increased carbon dioxide in the blood. There are so many other points that I could explain on, but that's just not time. Additionally, this is very divisive and naturally segregating implementation of learning how critical race, which catapults us backwards instead of moving forward in unity and acceptance for all and creates a hate for others is the most un-American theory I have ever come across. But my point is this, if this panel was truly interested in what we had to say, we would never be limited to one minute because you're in a hurry to get home. Yep. If you really cared about our kids and the generations to come, you would create time. And I know you're going to cut me off, but I want to tell you something.
I'm going to cut you off.
I know, you always do, but it's very important and we pay for.
This is not a town hall. This is our business meeting.
We pay for this time.
We also have a business meeting, so please, if you would, return to your seat.
Is to extend our time to be heard. One minute is insufficient. You understand what I'm saying?
I hear you. Please return to your seat.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more time.
I am asking you to return to your seat.
No, I'm going to ask you one more time.
I am asking you.
You can ask, I'm going to ask you.
We have adjourned for a recess at this time.
Go ahead.
We are at recess at seven twenty-four for ten minutes.
So apparently, she can choose to shut this down for ten minutes just because somebody wanted a little bit more time. And my thought for a moment was to give her my minute so she could. No, 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 I'm a little speechless because I'm a little bit shocked that this is officially done.
We can hold these people accountable. We can hold our cities accountable. We can hold our counties accountable and then we can hold our states accountable.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that the recess was for us to speechify and.
We're not leaving.
No, I'm not saying that, but you don't need to stand and start arguments in front of the public.
Nice job.
They have one day, once per month. Get onto the website. We also have both state counties, Board of Education. They have an amazing presentation on critical race theory. There's five panels. Two are admitted to be, we can join together. Two are admitted to be on the, on the left three you don't have. But like when I watched that, I was sitting there going, we can join together. They have divided us and divided us and divided us. We are arguing in our churches. We are arguing in our schools.
Arguing in school for me.
Everywhere we go, we are arguing. Are you vaccinated or are you not vaccinated? We should wear masks. We should not wear masks. Are your kids brown? Are your kids white? Are your kids mixed? They have divided us and at this time, it started with the parental rights. Or I'm sorry, the Children's Bill of Rights. Go back and research it. Every single thing that's passed on there, you have to get involved.
That's.
Yes. Probably just tell them to go to the Andy Falco Show dot com, theandyfalcoshow.com. All right, so I'm not sure when they're going to come back. They said they were going to take a recess for ten minutes. It's gotten pretty exciting around here. This has not happened at a meeting yet. So I'm not even sure how to respond to this, but it's exciting. Like I said, I wish I would have thought fast enough. I should have given her my minute so she could have continued going because she was on fire and just upset. The apple tarted maybe could have given that minute. Maybe a few of us had a minute or so to go. Oh, we got some comments coming up. Let's see what people are saying. Oh my gosh, I need glasses. Hey, Michelle, thank you. That the school district was going to start the stream. Well, that's what I heard, but maybe they thought I was busy doing it. Yeah, Kathy, that was a wow moment for sure. Control, yeah, control it, it's fine. Yeah, she, yeah. I don't know. I don't know what she's going to do because we still have, how many was that? I think we, oh, she's coming back. I'm going to turn my camera around. I think we, oh, she's coming back, I'm gonna turn my camera around.
We will resume public comment. I want you again, please, this is our business meeting. This is held in public, as per applicable law. However, we have other business to conduct. And that is why we can and will do, as other board members or other boards do, we limit the time. This is different than an input session like a town hall, something like that, to try to help and understand that. That is why we limit the time. Now, we will resume the public comment, please, if you would, stick to the minute that we have designated. Also, if we can't accomplish that, it is my plan and rules, I will have room entirely clear, and we will finish the board meeting without the comments.
Wow.
You don't want to do that, so I'm just saying, please, we wanna hear everyone, and please keep it in mind. Thank you very much. So let's continue on. Can we have a town hall meeting next? The next speaker will be Leah Wissing, followed by Alex McMartin, followed by Charlie Powley. First speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Leah Wissing. My son is a freshman from Altorato. He's healthy, he's finally enjoying being at school with his friends and playing sports. However, last week, we received an email from, um, Principal Davis regarding new protocol for, um, for vaxxed and unvaxxed kids. I was appalled. This is segregation wrapped up in medical tyranny. There should be no contact tracing. These policies further divide our children between vaxxed and unvaxxed on a product that is still going through clinical trials. Currently, there are hundreds of lawsuits that have been filed, one just recently, by UCI psychiatry professor and director of medical ethics, Dr. Erin Chiatri. He cites that the vaccine mandate is a violation of the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution's Fourteenth Amendment. There will be more lawsuits.
Uh, I wanted to touch on this same topic that she just discussed, the student system symptom decision tree. Uh, I won't go through the most of the detail, I'll just get to the bullets that I wanted to highlight for the board. Um, when you look at the decisions and the way they're made, the transmission of virus occurs whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated, there's a difference. The number of deaths related to COVID vaccines specifically this year is greater than the number of deaths of all the other vaccines we give our children.
Not true.
I ask that everyone remain quiet, regardless of what the opinions are, I apologize for this, I apologize for this, please, no matter who's here, we will show respect, please. Thank you very much.
And then the third bullet, just in, in general, inflammation of the heart in young adults, why are we even discussing a vaccine that could potentially harm our young children? If you look at those three bullets, and, and the way the decision tree is formed, it appears that they're rewarding the vaccinated, penalizing the unvaccinated, right? And creating an environment where children feel as though they need to be part of, part of the vaccinated crowd, whether their parents agree with it or not. I'm asking the board to please take that into consideration and try and help and fight for our children.
Indoctrination. This word is used a lot, and I wanna make sure that everyone in this room and everyone listening in understands what it is, what it means to be indoctrinated. Indoctrination means teaching someone to accept a set of beliefs or ideas without questioning them, without having conversation or critical thinking. So when is this happening in schools? Assemblies? People are up there, they're talking, they're giving their ideas, they're sharing their beliefs, there's no communication. Speakers, again, they're talking, they're giving their ideas, they're sharing their beliefs, there's no communication, there's no critical thinking. But the worst is the online programs, because the teachers say, okay, class, 30 minutes, go onto this website, and these students are logging in and they're watching videos and they're reading articles, and there's no communication, there's no critical thinking, there's no dialogue. That is indoctrination. These large companies that PYLUSD is contracted with are horrific. Please look them up, New Zealand A, iReady, there's a whole litany of them, look them up, look at the CEOs messaging. BLM, CRT, it's all there.
The next three speakers to come forth, Kristen Mortensen, followed by Amber Gordon, followed by Karen Fisher.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you for your responses to the emails, but please do read them before you send an automated response that has nothing to do with email. PYLUSD is completely discriminating against students who are not fully vaccinated for COVID-19. Right now, if you are directly exposed to somebody who has COVID, either in your home, living with them every day, or next to you at school, um, and you're fully vaccinated, you can go back to school without having a test. The CDC, I have a printout right here from the CDC, you can get COVID and you can spread it. Now, let's look at the same scenario, somebody who's not vaccinated. They cannot go back to school without two negative tests, should be the same for vaccinated, and they cannot go to extracurricular activities. The vaccinated can. Again, they can still spread it, just like anybody else. Now, the CDC does say both exposed children have equal chances of spreading and contracting COVID. Fauci himself says the same thing. Children not fully vaccinated will be getting a lesser education and missing out on sports. All children should be treated and be able to participate the same. Let them all go back or make them all stay home. No more discrimination. It shows everybody that people not vaccinated are-
Hello, uh, so I've been pondering what to say to the night's, um, meeting since the last meeting, and, um, just kinda waiting to see what unfolded, what was of the utmost important, immediate importance. And quite honestly, I, there's just so much, there's so much right now that I'm embarrassed to be part of the education field. However, I still hold my head up high because I know there are amazing educators out there, and they do not agree with this evil that's plaguing our education system. So at this point, I come to the few things that have already been touched on, and since I know my time's gonna run quick, I'm just gonna say I'm in full agreement with, um, a lot of the things that I've been saying tonight. Uh, the masks are ridiculous, I mean, the only two places in California you are mandated and required is a medical place and a classroom. That's ridiculous. I mean, you can go to a concert with a thousand different people and you don't have to wear a mask, but we're masking our children? We could go on and on for that, about that forever. Uh, CRT is about as racist as it gets for, uh, a program, and it has no place in our public education system. Um, my time's up before I even get to my last one, but please listen to our please.
Hello, my name's Karen Fisher, I'm the mom of six kids ages nine to 18. Um, I'm an immigrant to this country, and I'm the first generation partaker in the American dream. I go ahead, high crime and corruption. And I know what corruption looks like, and you should be ashamed of yourselves, because I'm looking at it right now. The mission we offer and accept for our schools to hold our kids' education ransom is corruption, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. My kids don't belong to this state, and they are not for sale. I will not be coerced into accepting the dangerous and fictional mandates and curriculum that you are proposing. I do not consent to vaccine mandates, and I do not, and I oppose the proposed critical race theory. We as parents are all here because we're on to you, and I'm telling you that it's not gonna end well for all of you. You're not following the science, you are following the money. The American dream is dying, and it's because of the actions of people like you. And it's gonna be a legacy, it's gonna be on your heads.
The next three speakers to come forth, Emily Rosell, followed by Gaston Castellanos, followed by Galen Diaz.
Is it Freeman? Galen is not, they left.
Oh, they were, they, okay.
Galen, um, Diaz, and Ashley.
I, I'll call them if they didn't hear.
They, they left, and they won't be here.
Okay, Galen left, and Ashley, all right, okay. All right, so Gaston Castellanos.
Emily Rosell.
Oh, Emily, I'm so sorry, that's what I'm trying to keep track of.
That's okay.
Please go ahead.
I listened to the Orange County Board meeting from July 27th of this year, discussing a panel of ethics, ethics experts. Um, I know Marilyn has attended these forums, and I expect most of you as well as it pertains to your job. Um, it's becoming increasingly apparent how damaging CRT is to the progress of individuals, especially children. I'm asking the board to remove CRT as an option for the ethnic study course during its review. Two months ago, Ms. Freeman and Ms. Buck voted against parents' rights. With no evidence, no data on children with COVID in our district, only some random US non-vetted COVID numbers on a piece of paper, you voted against a parent's right to choose for their child. The state mandates regarding mass vaccines, health decisions are concentrating on moving parents out of the decisions for our own children. Ms. Freeman and Ms. Buck, it is clear you align with the state, and you don't see the value of parents having rights to our own children. I have been asleep in this district in the past, but I'm awake. We are awake. Lastly, please don't improve a Judd item 22, there was absolutely no parent reviews on her website related to the trainees. Thanks.
Hello, members of the board, I'll be, I'll be very agree. First of all, congratulations on the low infection rates in our school district right now. I think that's po, proof positive that what you're doing is working and helping to get our children out of the worst of the worst. So keep it up. Second, whenever you're assessing the controversial items that come before you, please leave your own personal prejudices at the door. Here, you're here to represent 26,000 students, not just the students that look like you or may share your faith. They did all of our students deserve your protection. And finally, uh, I hope that you're gonna be listening to all of the parents, not just the loudest voices in the room, but all of the voices in the room. It's been my experience that many times, the loudest voices are the most untruthful voices. All the science, all of your doctors, you'll be fine. Thank you.
So respect, you're trying to do that for every speaker regardless of their point of view. Thank you. All right, um, so Ashley said has departed, okay? All right, and you said Galen. All right, next three speakers, Pam M., followed by Curtis and Catherine, followed by Andy Falco.
So the bylaws of this board need to be reviewed by December of this year. We can choose to ask them to change the bylaws so that we can speak more and not be limited to them. Per FOIA request, $226,000 in pool fees were collected for just the Yorblinda High School pool from 2009 to 2021. But that same FOIA request showed no records of spending a dollar on repairs, upgrades, maintenance, et cetera. If the purpose of collecting user fees is to recover costs related to the maintenance of the facilities, where did the money go? The district paid 100% of a contract fee to a consultant that conducted the facility fee study but didn't complete 100% of the work. The key piece of work missing would have been very helpful for everyone. The fees of surrounding school districts to make sure they were competitive and comparable. Why didn't the prior board have better oversight over this kind of behavior? For the Yorblinda High School pool, the district charges $120 to $180 an hour, when surrounding clubs charge much lower fees for a pool twice the size, ranging from $15 an hour to $84 an hour. The same consultant got a new contract in July to geocode all the student IDs in this district to students' home addresses. We need to back square footage number matters. Is that the full script that the staff provided to the board in their July board packet? I don't think so. I see this as a temporary study. If we need to do better, I have no vote on facility. Thank you very much.
At present, on this board, it's 7:47, the polls close in 13 minutes on the recall. And what we have been seeing is the efforts of a party who needs to keep its face energized, rather than paying attention to the science facts or other issues that need to be discussed. In a CNN exit poll, which I'm sure we'll see more data on later, about 45% of the people who voted today support new policies on the pandemic. Only one-third have called them too strict, with the remainder saying that they should be more strict. I'd like to remind you all you were with that ball in the parent's district, because I know you are relevant, and ask that for possibly in the future, you consider closing the meeting of public comments, because I do not believe that we are having facility professional law.
Respect, every speaker will come to the podium, if you would, any speaker, thank you very much.
Well, sorry to call that. I have over the last year sent actual signs to these people over here that have showed, um, the actual science behind whether masks work or not. I've interviewed 10 doctors over the last year that have shared with me their actual real-life experience in the, in the, um, operating rooms, in the, in the hospitals that are treating COVID. They all say the paper-cloth masks that our kids are being forced to wear do not work. They all say that. I have asked in return for the science that they're using for masking our kids, and I've never received anything. I've asked other people who say that masks work, this type of the science, I've never been sent anything. The kids are not even the vulnerable. We are the vulnerable, all of you are the vulnerable. And not one of you, and maybe one or two, strangely enough, are wearing masks, but none of you have actually made the choice not to wear a mask. We want the choice to tell our kids whether they should wear a mask or not. We know if our kids are vulnerable or not, they're very strong and they are healthy. I have asked, oh no, sorry, last night I was at the Orange County Board Supervise Meeting today, and specifically heard them say, we have left it up to each school district to decide what to do when it comes to the guidelines. So what is the problem? It is up to you guys. Uh, we have spoken the majority here, and we do not want our kids masked, we want the choice of whether having or not.
The next three speakers, Courtney Johnson, Paul Puffo, and we will-
When I was a kid growing up, I vividly remembered the district pushing a slogan called Dare. It was a program that taught students to be bold and not give in to peer pressure. Fast forward to present day, and not only has our district fostered an environment of peer pressure, but with current vaccine protocols, it has effectively segregated the student population. The strategy appears to punish the unvaccinated until they just give in to your desired outcome. You're a group of adults manipulating a vulnerable age group who just wanna fit in and go with the flow. You're indeed peer pressuring them into getting vaccinated against their will or beliefs by withholding attendance to schools, sports, and extracurricular attendees. You divided the school into two categories, vaccinated and unvaccinated, and different rules apply to each group, and it's not fair to our students. I do like your new slogan, however, noticed, needed, and nurtured. We noticed you weren't vaccinated, so there will be consequences. We needed you to get the shot, but you didn't listen to us. We nurtured vaccinated students while your child language is built for 14 years. And your responsibility and directive to do this is to visit the CDC website and that your hands are tied. At some point, you have to put our students before your careers and not do the full effort, but the price. Thank you.
My daughter goes to one of the high schools, and she joined Marple this year, excited about making friends. Last year, she spent the entire year being chased down by a transgender kid who made fun of her for something or another, and made her life a living hell for an entire year. who made fun of her for something or another and made her life a living hell for an entire year. All she wants this year is to have a good year, to have fun, to make new friends. But she has to worry about all of this stuff you're shoving down our children's mouths and in their ears and it just makes me absolutely sick. And I feel so bad for my daughter. I want to see her succeed. I want to see her go on and be somebody, not somebody who's a drain on the system, but somebody who is going to go out, earn her own way, and fight for people. Not lay around and expect somebody else to do it for her. Thank you very much.
Why is an unvaccinated child so threatening to a vaccinated teacher? And why are teachers bullying children to get vaccinated? We cannot have a vaccine mandate. It should be illegal, immoral, unconstitutional. I'll cover as much as I can. First, COVID-19 is almost certainly a gain-of-function virus. You need to research that item. Second, Robert Malone, widely recognized as a key innovator of messenger RNA technology, argues that this type of vaccine should not be universally given. In fact, if 100% get this vaccine, the results could backfire. Third, COVID infection breakthroughs among the vaccinated are widespread. They're not coding it in Orange County, but we are hearing that they are widespread. Fourth, VAERS data should not be ignored. And I know what the arguments are against VAERS. I know that, but don't ignore this data. What about natural immunity? And why are we being bribed and threatened when the number-one resistors to the vaccine are medical care professionals? My time is up.
The next three speakers, Chris Mordenstein, Chris Morgan, and Patricia Hansel. Happy to repeat, Chris Mordenstein, Chris Morgan, and Patricia Hansel. It would appear that the first speaker I called is no longer in the audience coming forward. So please, Mr. Morgan, if you'd like to proceed.
My name is Chris Morgan. I grew up in Yorbalinda. I'm a business owner in Yorbalinda. I've got a church in Yorbalinda and I'm raising my kids in Yorbalinda. And it's really, really sad to see what's going on here. I'll tell you my personal experience. I just contracted COVID a little over a month ago. Got the Delta variant. My whole family got it. We got through it. It was about three or four days. We were feeling down, going a little ill. We were able to take a lot of vitamin D supplement. We were able to get through it pretty easily. My kids got it. My two younger kids got it, two and a four-year-old. The extent of their COVID disease was a runny nose. Not even a temperature, not even anything. And so it's pretty insane. I see it from my point that you're looking to mask our children when they can get through it and their immune systems fight it better than anything. The data shows that COVID is less deadly than the common cold.
We really need to reject QAnon and those conspiracy theories. Why do you talk about items 22, 23, 24, and 28? We approved, or you approved as a board, the local control accountability plan, the LPA. So that means that all those programs need to be followed through to fulfill the obligations in the LPA. Those include the outreach efforts, assemblies which we support, curriculum, applications, and programs which were approved in the LPA. On another point, we asked that the district enforce masking, virus tracking, transparency, and testing at each school site in order to keep in-person school and avoid disruptions in education for over 24,000 students. We strongly encourage oversight, 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 and accountability. We expect the staff and the principals to implement all the measures advised. Stay focused first.
My name is Kathy Satchel. I was a teacher at Central Yorbalinda School District for eight years. I've taught for 32 years. The reason I'm here is on Sunday, I had one of your parents with tears in their eyes talk to one of the board members here and was worried about their child having to get the COVID shot. And I was just astounded. I'm sorry. In the beginning of COVID, I've been obsessed with finding out what is everything about it because it didn't sound right to me. None of it sounded right to me. So I'm here today to talk about COVID mandates. You realize that only, that 99.97% of children from 20 below do not have, are not affected by COVID. You will also note that it's an experimental drug. And if you're going to experiment with the children in your district, then you need to tell the parents what's in the COVID vaccine. We're not.
Hi, my name is Bridget Tanner. I have three kids in this district. This district and the city is full of good, family-oriented people who have high standards, not only for our children, but our society too. And now at these meetings, you are realizing that we have high standards for you as well. We are involved parents who believe in teaching and instilling in our kids attributes of kindness, honesty, accepting and loving others, and working hard for what they want. If we are at the point that we are telling any child that because of the color of their skin that they are not able or capable of achieving what they have worked so hard for because they have either been oppressed or have been an oppressor simply because of the skin color they were born with is not only against the attributes that we as parents have worked so hard to instill in our children, it is simply wrong. This is what critical race theory says and ultimately this will be what is taught if this district allows this to happen. My point to you tonight is that we as parents need to know that we are being heard by you, our elected school board. A parent's voice should be the most important, not your opinion or your view. You are hearing from us in large numbers now because you have lost our trust.
Could you, I mentioned that presentation during the recession, during the recess when we were all discussing these parents that was done on July, during July, during the OC school board. And it was quite enlightening and I really hope, in fact, I would expect that each of you let us know whether or not you observed that presentation or you read the notes on that presentation. That presentation became very apparent to me. It had to come with some terms, like some feelings in my heart because I was a little bit concerned when I read the credentials. And the credentials were there. And I started to realize that we have been divided completely in every single group and that's what critical race theory is going to finish. They, through this presentation, I was able to come to the conclusion that critical race theory is incredibly damaging to our students and our nation. It focuses on division, oppression, victimhood, its indoctrination of evil, encourages division, labeling, emotional decision-making, instant gratification, and low standards. Look at what happened this summer. That was instant gratification and that was, that was tried during riots. That's what we're teaching our children to do.
Thank you very much. The next two speakers, Sherry Boo and Somia Dollywall.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sherry Boo. I am the parent of a high school junior and my son graduated and he's off to college. I actually am really just here to ask everyone to support all 26,000 students in this district. No matter what color or gender they identify as or ethnicity, religion, or race, or any of that, I just ask you to support everyone. No matter what or who you are or how you identify, know that there are people out there that need your support. So I ask you to do that, please. And the way that we can do that is by training our staff and our counselors to support students who are different or who are struggling. To support, I've heard some people talk about the various applications that are used in the cops in New Zealand, things like that. I ask you to allow our kids to have some critical reasoning by utilizing those systems and then thinking on their own and talking with their parents and their teachers.
Hi, I'm Somia Dollywall. I'm the mother of two students in the district and I'm also a physician. I have 14 years of higher education in science. I'm here to urge you to please represent all the constituents. Please represent all of your students. Please understand that what you guys hear at these meetings is a highly skewed version of what everyone actually thinks. Please, I urge you, if there are major decisions to be made, send out a survey to all the parents in the district. Let everybody know. Ask everyone how they feel about these major decisions. Please follow public health guidelines made by actual scientists and physicians. Please, physicians wear masks for sometimes more than 12 hours and they manage to save lives while doing so. Nothing happens to their CO2 levels. Therefore, we wear masks to protect ourselves and protect our patients and we are the ones who study the science behind these things. All the, most of the hospitalized patients have been unvaccinated. Thank you for talking to me this afternoon.
Again, we made a point. Thank you very much. Appreciate it and everyone coming forward and making a point.
I hear you.
Okay, with that, we are going to move on in our agenda and our next person would be our student board member, Lauren Fair. And we have a report and then you'll have a call soon. Am I not being heard? Am I not being heard? You're all in the background. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We now have our student board report. Our student board member is Lauren Fair and she's going to give her student report for us.
Good evening, President Freeman, trustees, superintendent Dr. Gino Fassa, and executive cabinet members. I'm glad to be here tonight to show recent happenings from our high schools and alternative programs. Over at Friend of Vista Virtual Academy in Grand Bass, over 200 students have joined the school since the start of August. The school is excited to offer a wide range of virtual classes and enrichment activities for students. BBBA will begin offering STEM classes for all the students in grades 1st through 9th at the end of the month. This class is titled "Let's Explore STEM: Coding Games with Scratch and Web Development" will be taught online by U.S. Core Schools instructors. At El Camino Real High School, the faculty welcomes students back with this new motto, "Be where you belong." Especially exciting was a student created a mural with this, completed the first three days under supervision of the digital design teacher, Lee Peterson. It was a great low-stress way to welcome students back and support the school core values of collaboration and innovation. I've included a picture of the mural in my report that trustees should read. Eldorado High School recognizes the positive school culture embracing as the theme of the Golden Hops. To kick off the school year, Eldorado captured a school-wide photo of over 2,000 students and staff on the turf on the first day and held a well-attended school dance. The Golden Hops also won back Bell in their annual crosstown rivalry football game against Valencia High School with a score of 28 to 6. Overall, the school has already become a stronger together through the PBIS Foundation and the core of what Eldorado believes most, Spirit Number States at Eldorado High School. Esperanza just finished its successful first two weeks of a school with a pep rallying, more dance, and football games. Students have been excited to get involved on campus again and now preparing for their homecoming weekend. That sex homecoming football game and rally on Friday, September 24th and Saturday, September 25th. Esperanza students started the school year strong by creating various clubs to promote involvement across campus. The school's annual club rush week will take place at the beginning of October. George Key School Venture Academy students are busy getting back to school. This year, the school has focused on increasing functional communication skills. Training has started for aides on how to communicate with children with complex communication needs. The school is fortunate to partner with CSUF Professor and Speech Language Val. Dr. Lisa Erin Davidson to earn about evidence-based practices in communication. Venture Academy has also been busy developing relationships with local businesses, owners to increase drop cleaning opportunities for students. Crystal Farms and Blake's Barbecue are two of the latest business partners that will be working with the district's adults at Venture. Harview School's student council and leadership teams are excited to return to campus to hold elections, which will be followed by the Panthers' annual meet and greet game and holiday Cheerios free drive. Valencia High School Tiger Tube Live debuted as an elective class this school year in order to enhance the school's already strong video production program. The class will allow students to explore the art of live television broadcast too by live streaming, sports, performing arts, and other school events. Students will also integrate equipment setup, production planning, graphic design, networking, script, and performance broadcasting during the year-long class. Valencia's National Honesty Society will once again offer Tiger tutoring four days per week this school year starting September 20th. This service will support students with a place to get assistance for homework. Teachers will also offer assistance via Zoom for local elementary school students who need assistance. Tiger tutoring is offered Monday through Friday in the Valencia Library from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. A late bus is also provided for students who require transportation after tutoring. Way to go, VHS. Over at Yorbalinda High School, over 1,600 students returned to campus with a week of welcome, which included an alternative bell schedule to accommodate daily activities and a welcome rally. Each student was given an individualized gift by the first day, followed by a warm welcome from teacher, staff, and administrators. The theme of this year is "Get Connected," which promotes inclusivity and positive campus culture. Through this year's free lunch program, Yorbalinda School is serving 200 additional lunches per day than usual. As a result, the Mustangs have opened two more lunch lines and staff have volunteered to work along nutritional, nutrition services, workers to serve food, supervise lines, and make signs as human process. Way to go, Mustangs!
Sorry, I apologize. Thanks for reminding me. I was saying that in her porch under Valencia, it's pretty amazing actually to say that all 72 in the IP Corps, the International Bank of Korea, earned their diploma this year. So that's tremendous, which is a challenge that everyone's been facing. Well, you're seeing her here and she's a very high and you're, you know, you're that back. So you would tell us as far as what you've been doing and. So you would tell us as far as what you've been doing and learning and so forth that you want to discuss, as well as in the district as a whole. How do you feel that's compared you for once you leave and go on into life beyond high school?
Yes, being at Yorba Linda High School and being within the district, I feel it's prepared me by providing higher academic classes, like AP and honors classes that I've been involved in. That's pushed me to be harder, or kind of push myself a little bit harder in my academics and think creatively and kind of let me go deeper into certain topics. It's also got me to be more involved in my community and with on-campus activities. I've also learned to have stronger leadership that will contribute to benefit myself with anything I do. And the staff here as well has always been very supportive with anything that the students need, whether it's with school or just anything mentally, like they've been very supportive, especially with my personal life right now. They've been very supportive. I know that both Yorba Linda High School and Jersey has seen a future that I'm excited to see when I graduate.
Okay, Superintendent Freeman.
Good evening, President Freeman, trustees, and executive cabinet members. On Tuesday, August thirty-first, we welcome all of our students, staff, and families back to full-time learning across our thirty-four school campuses. Our first day was an incredibly exciting and remarkably cool one, as students of all ages, traditional players, which we've offered, Mountain Dew teachers, and outdoors, reunited with friends and began the twenty-one, twenty-two school. It was also unlike any others. Many students were returning to campuses for the first time since the start of the pandemic in March twenty-twenty. We look forward to the year ahead and appreciate all of the planning and preparation our staff did to ensure we experienced a successful start. As I shared in my back-to-school video last week, it is no secret that we have hoped to leave the difficulties of COVID-nineteen behind us last school year. However, the recent surge of cases across state nations made us realize that we will once again require patience, flexibility, and grace as we navigate the ever-changing nature of the pandemic. By following the mandates outlined in the California Department of Public Health's COVID-nineteen Public Health Guidelines for Cape Hill Schools, we are able to offer full-time, in-person instruction to all students safely, even if pandemic dynamics shift throughout the school year. Schools and school districts across the state, including private and charter schools, are not permitted to lessen the mandates we are under from the California Department of Public Health. We realize these ever-changing mandates can be frustrating at times for our students and families. I can assure you, they are frustrating for staff as well. I want to express my gratitude for the continued understanding of our students, employees, staff, and families as we continue to abide by all such requirements from the state. Next, our friends at the city of Placencia, as well as the California Office of Trade and Traffic Safety and Walker World's nonprofit organization, are hosting Placencia Walker World Festival this Saturday, September eighteenth, from nine A.M. to one P.M. at Crater Mills School in Placencia. Students and families are encouraged to attend and participate in free bike tune-ups, skill stations, and the way. Additional information about the city is available on our website at www.pylusb.org/news. We are grateful to have such supportive local partners who prioritize the safety and wellbeing of the entire school district community. It's hard to believe it's been twenty years since the attacks on Nation War on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Each year, our school district joins the nation in remembering the thousands of Americans who lost their lives as a result of these attacks, including the brave first responders. Every year on September eleventh, known as Patriot Day, P-Y-L-U-S-D facilities fly flags and have staff, and all schools hold special activities and remembrance. This year was no different, as schools encourage students to wear red light blue, decorated campuses with pink bionic colors, held moments of silence and flag ceremonies, shared about the day's historical significance through mourning and video announcements, and so much more. P-Y-L will never forget. And in closing, we have a very special announcement to share this evening. Each year, the California School Board Association, known as CSBA, presents the Golden Gavel Award to one Missouri school board member across the entire state. The Golden Gavel Award recipient exemplifies best practices in effective governance and partnership and reflects the depth and breadth of governance decisions supporting programs that are necessary to address students' changing needs. The nomination process for this award is extensive, and board members must meet a long list of criteria to even be considered. Tonight, I'm proud to announce that our very own and senior Yorba Linda UniFest Board President, Mrs. Karen Freeman, has been selected for this distinguished honor. Let's give her a round of applause. Karen Freeman was nominated for the Golden Gavel Award by her board colleague, Vice President Carrie Byer. The student who presented has served as a dedicated member on our Board of Education since nineteen eighty-nine. Prior to the school disclosure in nineteen eighty-nine, President Freeman also served on the Board of Education for the Yorba Linda School District. It's no secret that she has displayed exemplary horsemanship and has functioned as a trustworthy and community-minded elected official, qualities that has sustained her seat on the board for over three decades. CSBA plans to officially recognize President Freeman in December, in the event of a meeting during our future board meeting, to properly honor her and share all about her accomplishments. Congratulations, President Freeman. And that concludes my report.
Okay, well, we are at staff presentations, and as we get ready for that, I'm looking to see if the instructional supervisor, Mrs. Skipper, is... She's still here. She's... We also have a very strong partnership with Yorba Linda Regional Occupation Center, which is ROP. So for example, the mural that you were talking about in your report, I think it's actually a member of the instructor who is at El Camino, and I actually saw that when I was in Peterborough. So we have at our various schools, our high schools, we have ROP instructors. And Mrs. Linda Skipper is our trustee instructional supervisor for all of our school programs for ROP. Let me just briefly stand here. I'm gonna embarrass you. But she has an important role in serving our students from ROP in this district, and thank you for being here this evening. So, we are at staff presentations, so I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, President Freeman. The next item on tonight's agenda is being presented under request of a community member. The specific request was to modify the current use of facilities fee structure. And as a result, Mr. David Giardano, Assistant Secretary of Business Services, and Mr. Paul Warras, Director of Use of Facilities, will provide the board with a presentation that includes an overview of the Use of Facilities program, as well as the fee structure that was subsequently approved by the board in August twenty nineteen. Mr. Giardano?
Thank you, Dr. Al Sasser, President Freeman, and members of the board. Tonight, Mr. Paul Warras and I are going to provide an overview of our district's Use of Facilities program. Mr. Warras currently serves as the director that oversees our program, and he also oversees our energy management program as well. So here's a look at tonight's agenda. First, we're going to provide an overview of the district's Use of Facilities program, and then discuss the key responsibilities and support functions of this department. Next, we're going to review the key provisions that are contained in the California Civic Center Act, Code Section thirty-eight, one thirty-four, and then the California Federal Regulations, all of which govern our use of school facilities. Also, we can discuss what the district initially conducted fee study that was finalized back in early two thousand and nineteen, and the process that we utilized before that fee study, including the stakeholder engagement component. And lastly, we're going to finish up with a review of our cost recovery history and then the current program status. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Warras, who's going to provide an overview of the program.
Good evening. As outlined in the Civic Center Act, which Mr. Giardano will expand on, district facilities are to be made available as civic centers for the community but not in use for school purposes under specified guidelines. A key responsibility of the program is to oversee external athletic groups in regards to facility allocation, scheduling, communication of rules and regulations, assignment of support staff, verification of required insurance, and billing. In a typical year, there are more than sixteen thousand external athletic events that are held on district facilities. Use of facilities staff works closely with the high school athletic directors and site administration to determine when external teams can have access to district facilities, as internal sports programs have priority scheduling. The types of groups served by the department range from the recreation to club teams, and include such organizations as Junior United Soccer Association, JUSA, Advantage Football League, AFL, Elite Aquatic Sports Team, EAST, Swim Team of Placentia, STO, Orange County Water Polo Foundation, and North County Sports Association, the Native Few. Additionally, we serve the city of Yorba Linda and Placentia in various events. The district theater, which includes the Performing Arts Center at Eldorado High School, the auditorium at Valencia High School, and the Forum at Yorba Linda High School, are also scheduled and staffed by the Use of Facilities Department. The theaters, which are heavily used, differ from sports in that the department is responsible for scheduling and staffing for external as well as internal events. In a typical year, approximately one thousand plays, church services, instrumental and choir concerts, dance show, as well as other events, take place in these facilities. Mr. Giardano will now cover some of the rules and regulations governing school facilities.
So existing law, which is known as the Civic Center Act, provides the statutory authority and the legal framework regarding the use of school district facilities by our external groups. This act authorizes the school district to grant the use of school facilities or grounds as civic centers for specific purposes upon the terms and conditions that are set forth by our governing board. The law also authorizes the school districts to charge a fee, not to exceed the school district's direct cost, but the use of school facilities are bound by entities that promote youth and school activities or sports activity activities for use. The fee classifications are defined in Education through Section thirty-eight, one thirty-four, as well as our board policy thirteen thirty, Use of School Facilities. And here's a look at those fee classifications that are defined in Education through Section thirty-eight, one thirty-four, as well as board policy. So in proportion to the organization's use of school facilities or grounds, direct costs include all the following: includes the share of costs of supplies, utilities, janitorial services, services of school employees, and salaries paid to school employees to operate and maintain our school facilities or grounds. The direct costs also include the share of costs for maintenance, repair, restoration, and refurbishment of school facilities or grounds. The fair rental value cost includes all the direct cost fees that we just mentioned, plus the amortized cost of the school facilities or grounds. These fees must be charged for entertainment events, or means where a condition fee is charged or contributions are solicited, and the net receipts are not expended to the welfare of the district's students for charitable purposes. The California Code of Regulations is Section fourteen zero four one. It further requires the school district to adopt a fee schedule that includes the hourly fee for each specific school facility or grounds when charging fees pursuant to the Civic Center Act. This law also further defines how school and use fees are to be calculated. So why did our district complete a fee study? There were significant changes that were made in law that occurred between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, which made it necessary for the district to update our board policy thirteen thirty, Fair Use of School Facilities. The board policy was updated in August of two thousand and seventeen to align with the changes in law, including the changes to the fee classifications. In the following months, this was in September of two thousand and seventeen, the board approved an agreement with an independent expert to perform a fee study. The study was necessary in order to update the district's fee table using current district cost data and ensure alignment with the Civic Center Act requirements. It's also important to note that there were two local bond measures that were passed by voters, which is Measure Y in two thousand and two, and then Measure A in two thousand and eight, that provided approximately three hundred million dollars in local funding and another three hundred million dollars in state matching funds to upgrade district facilities. And without a dedicated funding source to maintain these dangerous activity investments, it's important to staff periodically review and update the district's Use of Facility Fee Table to ensure cost recovery of facilities by those outside groups. Additionally, each year, our district spends approximately two million dollars to maintain all of our grass fields throughout the district. Prior to the fee study, there was no mechanism to recover the cost incurred by the district for grass field usage by the outside groups. As a result of that, discretionary revenue in the general fund was used to cover all of these costs. Of course, these resources could have been used to fund other district priorities. Likewise, the cost to maintain other district facilities continued to increase each and every year as well, and to ensure our district's able to maintain high-quality facilities for all of our students, staff, and our community, it's important that we continue to recover costs incurred for the outside facility use. Regarding the process that we utilized to conduct the fee study, our staff reached out to multiple companies that specialize in this type of work. Ultimately, it was Quark or Strategies that was selected as the district's independent expert to perform that fee study. Company's well-known as one of the premier consultants used by school districts for this type of detailed fee analysis. Preparation that fee study involved an extensive and detailed collection of district data, which was used to calculate school district direct cost. Study also included updated fee calculations that are based on that district cost data, as well as the Civic Center requirements that were in place at the time. Currently, several of our surrounding districts are going through a similar process to update their respective fee tables, and the majority of these districts are using Quark or Strategies to complete that requiring analysis. So after the fee study was finalized, this was back in February of two thousand and nineteen, during the following month, our staff held a staff meeting with the key stakeholder groups to discuss the results of that fee study. We do need to propose fee schedule, and then gather feedback from the different stakeholder groups. There were a dozen representatives from various groups that were able to participate in that discussion. And the majority of stakeholders in attendance requested a phased implementation plan for the proposed fee revisions. Additional concerns raised by some of the groups included maintenance of district facilities and then perceived rate disparity across similar facilities. In the weeks following the stakeholder meeting, our staff received some additional feedback from several of those user groups. And to address their concerns, staff used the feedback to develop a multi-year phased implementation plan for the proposed fee revisions. Plan would allow user groups time to adjust the new fee schedule over a period spanning nearly two years. So in August of two thousand and nineteen, that new fee schedule was approved by the Board of Education. Any reduction in fees per fee study would have effect immediately on board approval, and the greatest reductions were seen in fees associated with the use of our theaters. To address the stakeholder feedback that we discussed earlier, that new fee schedule became effective April first of two thousand and twenty, a full month, a full eight months after board approval, and then was phased in over a two-year period with fifty percent of the actual fee increases effective April one of two thousand and twenty, and then the remaining fifty percent effective April one of two thousand and twenty-one. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Warras, who provided a review of the program's cost recovery history and the current status as well.
This slide summarizes our cost recovery history for the Use of Facilities program over the last several years. Fees recovered during the eighteen nineteen, I'm sorry, seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen fiscal years were based on the prior fee table. Over sixty percent of the fees were covered in those fiscal years related to external use of district theaters. As you can see from this slide, two thousand and nineteen, twenty, facility use was severely impacted by the pandemic-related shutdown of all school facilities and grounds in March of two thousand and twenty. Up until the shutdown, facility usage by external groups was high, and the program was on track to exceed prior year cost recovery. Although the district began to reopen school facilities and grounds to external groups beginning October of two thousand and twenty, many groups were seriously impacted by state and local health regulations, which limited the organization's return to facility use. Though sports were heavily affected, theater use experienced the largest reduction in use as indoor regulations remained extremely strict. Even today, challenges continue due to the pandemic. The department is working closely with external groups regarding state and local health regulations to facilitate a return to facility use. Activity for the month of July and August has increased, although theater use is recovering slowly. Program is excited to see a return to use by existing rooms. Additionally, there has been a significant increase in first-time group interest in using district facilities. With that, we'd like to open up to any questions the board may have.
Board members, please, any questions? Sims?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions. And most of my questions really have to pertain to your presentation, but more... presentation, but more to the original study that was done by Quark or Stat Strategies. And I'm wondering if it's possible to have them come back to answer some of their questions. I mean, I can give examples of what I'm looking at, but if you look at Table 5, Table 15, and Table 22, I have a lot of questions on how these numbers for proportional use came to be. I just did some simple math, and the numbers don't really add up. And so, I'm just... I'll give you an example. It says for Table 5 that it was calculated a hundred and eighty days of school, it was seven hours. And that calculation in the study comes out to eighteen hundred and thirty-six hours, but if I do the math correctly with my fancy iPhone, then it comes out to twelve hundred and sixty. So, I'm concerned that these numbers were used to come up with our proportional use, and if these numbers are not correct, if the basis of our proportional use are not accurate, then everything going after that is incorrect. That same thing happened with outdoor facilities as well. The pool fees was correct, but I have some questions about how that number was also generated, the hours. So, I just wondered if they could come back and do a presentation? I know you guys did not do this study. I just have questions, and I'm just kind of curious on how those came to me.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Absolutely, I think we can invite Quark or Strategies back and go through the fee study in detail. I don't think that would be unusual. I think when you look at that fee study, it was very time-intensive. And that process took well over a year to complete. Literally what they were doing is they were looking at facility usage, they were looking at facility schedules and applications, taking all that information, gathering all of our cost data as well. So they literally went through all of our financial system data, which we have multiple financial systems, so we transitioned through the process. So there was a lot of detailed analysis there. I'm sure they'd be happy to come in and explain the basis of some of those calculations. That report is pretty detailed. I've gone through it, but it's been a while. It's completed back in February 2019, and so it's been some time since I went through it, so we'd be happy to invite them back. So I would suggest if we do that, we bring them back in like a final talk workshop prior to recording the study.
Additional questions? Oh, did you have more?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and I'd also really like to see the comparison chart of the facilities from the other districts. That study, it's not shown in the original study, and we didn't show it today, and I'm just... That was one of the main stakeholder feedbacks, where they were, you know, worried that our fees or whatever were unjust. And so I just think it'd be really good to see that, since it was a stakeholder comment.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Absolutely, we can provide that information. When we did the analysis, or they did the study, it was just again back in February 2019 that we wrapped up. Our staff went in and did comparisons of surrounding districts, and we got that data, and we have to share with them.
Thank you. My question would be about, I believe it's the 501(c)(2) nonprofits, which we have coaches in our district if they had a type of club team, and they had fifty-one percent of people from our city using or on a team, that they could apply for the nonprofit status. And I think part of the issue is that as of July 22nd, when a group contacted Orange United School District, their nonprofit is fifteen dollars an hour to use the pool. And I know that Irvine has a nonprofit status too. And so I think the question is, is that how come we have not provided a nonprofit status to people in our district who who want it?
Yeah, and other good points that the missus played. So when you look at our fee schedule, there's three basic categories. You have the internal groups, which is really all of our internal groups that are using our facilities or sports teams. You also have direct cost groups, those are your nonprofits. And then you have the fair value group, which is really your for-profits. So the majority of our nonprofits fall in that direct cost category. When you look at PTAs and booster groups, for example, those are really outside, they're sort of in-between an internal group and a direct cost group. We don't charge for their use because their school activities are directly related to the school. But the majority of the nonprofits are categorized in that direct cost group.
Are any of our coaches or any of the people who have club teams, are they in that nonprofit group?
Yes, that's where they're categorized.
Is there a number in which, a number, amount of students that are needed in order to provide that nonprofit tag?
No, it's really, I think, I'd like to ask you to, this is probably well-spoken on this particular topic. It's really just a designation of that, that nonprofit status that they might file, so.
Sure, I think the benefit that they would have with how many students are enrolled in our district is for priority when it comes to use. But as far as nonprofit, the majority of them are already nonprofit. And that's... I think that's all that's needed for that portion.
So, well, if they have, if our, if coaches have a club team and have a nonprofit status, is their fees being reduced, or are they paying?
They're in that direct, yes.
Expense.
So, would that, would that be something in which we could look at as a board in order to change? I've got a coach that has a nonprofit team on the weekend and wants to use facilities. Would we be able to charge a different amount from outside boosters that are willing to use that same facility?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That's actually a question that we have posed to the legal counsel. Because there's those specific categories that are included in the Civic Center Act, those categories that we did earlier, there's really no way to tweak those categories. If we start to-
You can charge zero. Civic Center Act allows you to charge zero.
Excuse me, this is not a public discussion, this is our meeting. Thank you.
If we start to charge differently between the groups, we could be subject to some type of discrimination play. So we have to be careful not to create different schedules that are for some groups versus others. So it's just, we definitely have to review that with legal counsel. But I think it could be problematic trying to give certain groups a preferential rate.
But it would be acceptable if it were a flat rate across the board?
And do you know how these pool fees were done? I know we have a smaller pool than Irvine, and Irvine's charging, as of this year, they're charging eighty-four dollars an hour. And they have twice the size of the pool that we do, but we're charging a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And can you also tell me what the custodian fees are per hour? Because we raised that, I think, to forty-eight dollars an hour.
Yeah, we could provide additional detail on those numbers, or we'd have to reach out to those districts and get that feedback. And I know they just went through the Use of Facilities fee study themselves, and they just adjusted their rates, and I don't have those two rates for them. Yeah, provide that information. I know that they did just go through the fee study, and those rates have...
So we worked closely with the custodial supervisor, and I'm happy to share that because of trying to work to lower those costs, you're correct, it's forty-eight an hour for overtime. But we were able to do a one-hour overtime at the end of the shift, and hopefully, there's enough to, teams that are playing on our fields at that time, to split those costs. So we were able to charge only twenty-five for one hour instead of many of their... Many other districts go all the way up to, like you said, forty-eight dollars an hour for a three-hour minimum, actually. So we're able to do it per team, twenty-five for the entire day. That's on weekdays. On the weekends, we actually do have to do a three-hour minimum that's required by the union. So we also work though to provide, if they're going to be an extensive day, to have them come on and then return instead of possibly if it's a twelve-hour day, seeing where that custodian can be helpful to reduce some of those costs. So we're working closely with the user groups to try to lower those costs, because we do understand that if it's a long day, that those prices can get higher.
And I also had another question too. Is the reason that maybe our pool fees are so much higher is that we're charging per lane? Because I know like if a water polo team wants to use the pool, they don't need any lanes, so it usually just gets separated off. So are we charging by lane, or are we charging for the entire pool? Is that why maybe we're so much higher? And I also wanted to ask too. Our boosters are paying a lot of money to maintain the field as well. And so I kind of have been asking, and I haven't really seen, how much is going into each program? That we've come back, I think I've asked several times to see what goes out into what programs. I know baseball spent ten thousand dollars to do their varsity bills, probably more now, from varsity and JV at one of the high schools. I know the soccer, the soccer field at another high school, they've been spending ten, fifteen thousand dollars, and that's coming from the boosters. And so I think some of the frustration of the parents is, you know, that we're paying, if you're living in the city, you're paying your taxes, and then here you are, you're, you know, your son, your daughter signed up for sports, and here you are paying more money to the boosters as all the fees keep rising, and then now the facility fees are rising, and you're just like bleeding money. The programs are bleeding money. So I think it would be good if our community, or at least us in Florida too, can see how much the district is actually putting into these fields, and actually putting into the pool, and putting into facilities.
Transparency.
So that would be, I think that would be a really good thing for all of us to be able to see, so we know exactly where the money's going.
We definitely provide that information for you. And in terms of the pools charging, you know, by pool, if you look around surrounding districts, it's typically, you run out the entire pool. And I think there's reasons for that. You know, you have a water polo team practice in there, for example. It'd be very difficult to divide that up safely. And so it's typically run it out by the entire pool. So, but those are things that we figured out to be a problem. There might be a swim team, for example, that comes in that you can safely divide up the pool. So those are things that we can add if the board is interested.
Thank you.
I'd like just to ask a question about, so we're talking about renting the space for community groups. Is there, and I'm only really interested in the fields as you look at local neighborhoods that may not have parks that are close to them. What have we looked at to open up those fields? What is the schedule like? Is there availability for the community to come in and use those fields, regardless of if they have, you know, maybe not an organized activity, but designated times for them to use that?
We do have several organizations throughout that would be considered in those areas. We have a fantastic soccer program that has been over at Topaz for several years. The cost is pretty minimal, and we also have tried to, what was brought up about custodial cost. In those areas that we can do a porta potty, it's much less cost than having to have a custodian there to do so. So if we are able to provide those, we do that. Some of the other areas, such as Rio Vista, that is joint use. So is Downpass. Yes, so many of those are joint use agreements. Outside of that, we do have many soccer organizations already utilizing those spaces.
So when they're not being used for soccer and not during school time, they're actually available and open for the community?
We are not, we're not open for, like, park use at this time. So that could be something that we can look into further.
Any other questions? Juarez, you have any questions?
So if we can gather gathered the stakeholders and the support units that we have in the leadership participation during the campaign.
All right. All right, good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the two presenters that brought forward something that's been interesting. Okay. We're concerned calendar. Okay, all right. Can we take a quick break? Oh, yes. Yes, that would be great. We will take, well, let's be back at nine o'clock. Let's just come back at nine o'clock. Thank you. We're going to take a recess and see how some of our time to go on our agenda. So at eight forty-seven, we're going to take a recess.
Okay, my friends. So we've been on now for a couple hours. I'm starving. So, and oh, my battery's going to run out too. So I'm going to conclude the video. They have more that they're going to be discussing later. But I'm sorry. I need to go eat some food. All of you that have been watching, Martin, right? Martin and Jennifer, Kathy, Kristen, who is watching, Amber. All you guys, thank you for your comments and participating in the meeting. I appreciate you so much. Thanks.